Start whenever you are ready.
Okay, we detected a problem in the first budget that we issued last week and we made a correction.
Okay.
Whoops, I didn't turn my mic on. So we made the corrections. It was in the fire wages and we understated the fire wages by a little over $800,000 and there were two raises, one for 24 and one for 25. And just during the process of calculating that, something slipped in our calculation and we lost 800,000 there. So we-
Was there any particular page on your handout or are you just giving us-
I'm telling you why I'm giving you a different budget. Yeah, so the revenue page is going to be different. We corrected some of the revenues and we corrected the fire salaries and there were also a few other little things that we dropped or missed. The- Treasurer's office, yeah. The treasurer's office had asked for a few things and we forgot to put them in. So we put them in because they're an elected official and we put them in so that he can discuss those with you. So those are the major changes. We missed somebody's raise in the HR department, just a small one. Couple of things like that, but hopefully you didn't all mark up your old budgets.
That's okay.
But, okay, so we're doing the revenues and all of the accounting and finance departments, the mayor's department and communications. So, and Melissa has the pages up on the screen as well. We're going to start with revenues on page 16 and 17. So the real estate taxes, there's some handouts-
And you're going off of the book, right?
Well, we're going off of the book and we've got a bunch of handouts that pertain-
I just want to make sure Mel has what he needs so he can follow along.
Oh, okay, the-
Not the handout.
Both. We're kind of bouncing back and forth between the handouts and the budget book. Page 16 and 17. All right, so, okay, 16 and 17, the first section is taxes and that's our biggest part of our revenue. And quite a few of these handouts in the budget handout that we gave you today pertain to the revenues. So we're going to start on page 12 in the handout. And they're double sided. So this is the county assessment data and we get this data every year in July through June 30th. And that handout just gives you the value of all the taxable and exempt properties. And you'll notice that quite a bit of our properties, almost a third of them are tax exempt. Thirty percent. So that poses a big problem for our revenue streams because that's missed opportunity. There's a lot of buildings there that we're not able to collect taxes on, a lot of properties.
The good quality properties too.
Right, right. And, you know, the next page, page 13, has, oh, sorry. You got it? I was looking at page 14, has all of the tax exempt properties on it, the top 20. And the top 20, you can see, makes up a good portion of all of the tax exempt properties. We've got the assessed value and we've got them color coded down below. It shows you which, what the color coding means. It's the governmental properties, the properties that have pilot agreements and other. So we, two of our top 10 have pilot agreements and the rest of them don't. So they're paying no taxes.
So how do we, how do we start getting the ones who don't have anything? How do we get a pilot agreement?
That would be a committee. The school district and the county have to be involved and it has to be negotiated. And several times in past years, committees have started up, but they just, they tend to fizzle out. So maybe that's something that we need to be doing because, you know, if, once you get further into the budget, you're going to see a big deficit next year that these taxes would almost cover.
School district undertook this, not that, when I was on there, they had a committee and they were pretty successful in collecting a lot of the money and proving that some of these people were not necessarily following within the, 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 the realms of a nonprofit like they were stating. So I think there's a great model that exists.
So they're doing a pilot just for the school district?
Some of them, yeah. And some of them, but then, yeah, I think that'd be worthwhile discussion. Now, this was like four, what was it, four years ago, where they took on some of the, bear with me as this next, some of the nursing homes that maybe were a little bit more for profit, that were, were having a lot of tax exemptions. So I do think that there are, there are places that this can be done.
What's United States of America?
Federal buildings, courthouse, post offices. Okay, so we went over those, the tax exempt. Oh, I skipped over the tax rate. That's on page 15. And that is, that's the same as last year. There you go, 13.12 mils. So that's going to stay the same. I'm sorry, I'm bouncing around here a little bit. The, page 13 is our pilot agreements. Those are the one, those are like the five properties that we, six properties that we have pilot agreements with, property owners. Now, we do get donations once in a while from other nonprofits, but they are not under any sort of agreements. They're at will.
And I remember last year, our donations were really low for the year. So I haven't heard anything this year, so.
Well, there is a, there is a page in the council handbook that has to do with the donations. I didn't write that one down. Okay. I can find it. You know what it looks like. Okay, it's on page 40. Nope. I believe the table of contents will probably help, right? Eighteen.
Page 18 of your handout?
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't put that into our presentation. So if you can just page to 18. Yeah, we haven't, we've, we got 100,000 from Gannon and 1,000 from St. James and 5,600 from Knights of St. George. And Sisters of Mercy has been very consistently giving us 15,000 in December of every year. So I'm hoping that that will happen as well. Okay, so with all that taken into account, the top, the top three lines, we're going back to the budget page, revenue page.
With number, on page 13, when it says amount, what does that mean? Like this is what they owe us in the pilot?
Yeah, that's what they pay us. Yeah. And we've collected most of that already. Yeah, and that, that, the pilot is on line, it's on account number 3391 and it's towards the bottom of page 16. So we've collected 1.1 million so far and we budgeted a little bit less than that for next year. I think it just came through higher than we thought it was going to after we'd already put the budget together. So there's that. So the taxes make up the first three line items on the revenue budget. And our collections-
Big book, right?
Page 16?
Right.
Yeah. And we base this on, you know, the prior year's collections and basically kept everything the same, but our collection rate has been getting better. So the revenue is a little higher for next year, based on where we're at this year versus last year and we projected that. So then there's 3111, account 3111 is appropriated fund balance and that is the prepayment money that we're using to balance the budget. And the next several account numbers are the income taxes. The income taxes, they're pretty consistent from 23 to 24. And we put a little bit more in there for people getting raises and things like that, but, and we compared our numbers with Burkhymmer's projections. They help, they give us a projection every year and we came in just about the same as theirs. So we feel pretty good about the tax numbers.
Can I jump back to 311?
3111.
Is that, is that all, is that the last dollar we have left in the water prepayment?
No, there's just over 300,000 left. And if you remember in my mid-year, there might have been, there's a possibility that we can put some back into, back into that fund if we come out with a surplus this year.
Okay.
What's that look like?
What's it look like?
Our surplus for this year?
I, I've been working on the budget. I really haven't been able to project this year again. But in noon, we were, or in, in June, we were looking at, I think, 1.4 or something like that. I don't remember.
We finished 23 with 5.5.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So we're-
Yeah, well, it was more like 2.5 because 2.5 of it was restricted.
Yeah.
So.
For act 205.
Yeah, it has to go to the pension. Yeah, so licenses and permits, we figured those are, those are budgeted just about the way they're doing this year. Don't expect any huge changes there. The cable TV franchise, we lowered that a bit because we're getting people, participation in cable TV is getting lower and lower. They're, they're losing customers. So we lowered that number.
Curious around, just like the plumbing inspections, like that's just, that's a jump up, but then like, seeing how much that came through compared to the electrical, is it just that all the water lines are really bad?
We hired, we hired a plumbing inspector last year.
Okay, so that's catching, and then the-
Yeah, that's catching up.
Got you, thank you.
And the rental, it's increased because they, they doubled down on their efforts a couple of years ago. So that's been coming up.
And then the amusement tax, that's going up by a couple hundred thousand within the next budget. How, can you walk me through just like how, how we project we'll get there?
Which one is that? Where is that?
Sorry, up on-
37.56.
Yeah, 37.56.
Oh, okay, up there.
It's pretty, yeah, it's a substantial jump you got planned to there.
Um, that's the- The what? Skills, games of skill. We were told that, yeah, there's something going on with-
At the state?
At, is the state doing that?
Or is it us? Okay, cool.
Yeah, so we're going to start collecting that?
Yeah, that's great.
Uh, let's see, back to, okay, the grants in the next section. Let's see.
Wait, do we have to, do we have to note that as a fee then? Because it's a, okay, so.
So we should have put it down in the fees?
Yes. We have to be careful with how we state that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll move it for the final. Yeah, the grants are just, these are all miscellaneous grants that we get in every year and we do our best to just estimate them based on prior behavior. The state aid pension system, that kind of goes up and down.
Before we get to the grants, you know, I'll just keep picking on all my favorite revenue sources. You have the vacancy going down. We've never had that low before. 2023, we didn't even have the whole year and we made 41.8. Last year, you know, budgeted for 40, but we're on pace for that, it looks like. And then you have it at only 30 in 2025. It's lining 3227?
Yeah, I, I think maybe when we first did the budget, this year's was a bit, quite a bit lower. So we can probably-
It looks like we're hitting 40 every year.
Yeah, we could probably increase that.
And that's just the vacancy, or that's just the foreclosure side. I mean, that's like sort of passive.
Well, we can take that up.
Please.
12,000, 10,000?
I mean, 40 is what we've been hitting two years in a row now.
Okay, we'll, we'll move that up to 40. Okay, back to the grants?
Well, no, and then in the same sense, why short-term rental expected to be reduced in two years as well? Sorry, I'm going to pick all of the legislations I've sponsored in the last two years that are revenue sources.
All right. Short-term rentals, we've collected $360.
Yeah, and then next year you're only planning on 200?
Uh, like I said, we started this budget a month or so, a month or two ago and we might have put some of these revenues in and the current year might have changed. I mean, what do you, what do you want to move it to?
I'm not going to nickel and dime you, but I, I'm-
Do you want to make it 500 this year?
Yeah.
What is the fee?
Nah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, that's just one of those ones. We have no idea what it's going to be because it just started.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to overshoot it, but a few hundred dollars isn't going to make a huge dent in that.
Yeah, in both cases, you're just projecting it to go down. And if anything, I would hope and expect it to go up.
Okay, what next?
Now, now we're on to grants.
Okay.
My question with the grants, this is the money that we received, how much do we have to match? And where do we get the money to match it?
These aren't that kind of a grant. These are, we're just receiving money on these. We're not matching it. Yeah. We do, we do pick up a lot of grants that we have to match and, and sometimes those are matched from other grants. The, you can't match a federal grant with federal funds, but you can match it with state funds. So we try to stack-
The way to do it, okay.
Whenever we can. And sometimes they come out of the capital fund if it's buying a piece of equipment or something. So they're, they're all different. And Renee's bringing in, Renee and Aaron are bringing in dozens of grants every month, it seems like. So we're, we're pretty busy with that. All right, so the, yeah, like I said, I don't want to go over every grant separately, but the, the state aid and the liquid fuel both are based on fees that the state collects or taxes. So those move up and down and the state aid has been going up consistently. And I look back several years and it, it ebbs and, you know, falls. So I didn't want to get too aggressive with that. But that's, you know, something to look at if we need to, to increase something.
Lisa, in the pilots, it said that the Port Authority some years back gave us money. Do they not give us money anymore?
No, or I, I don't, I don't remember ever getting money from the Port Authority. Where's that?
Under-
Oh.
Eerie Western Port Authority, 2013 and 2012, they gave us $60,000 on page 18.
I don't remember what that was for, but-
And 2014 they did as well.
Well-
Three years in a row.
And then it stopped completely.
And then it stopped.
Yeah, the prep used to give us money as well.
We're still, they didn't do that, huh?
Nope. No, the mayor and I talked to them.
I talked to them too.
We talked to them a few weeks ago about that.
And there's like-
What page is that counting?
Page 6, 18, I'm sorry, page 18.
Maybe we have to be serious about that committee, nonprofits.
Yeah, well, after COVID, a lot of our gifts or our grants or donations kind of dropped away.
It did say like Lee Com gave in 2014 and 2015. I'm just wondering why.
Why it stopped?
Yeah.
Why a lot of stopped?
Well, the economy, I'm going to, I'm going to blame the economy, but I haven't called them all and asked them about it, but.
Do you generally have to like ask them for it or do they just kind of give it to you? How does that work?
Normally they just give it to us.
Okay, so you don't have to go like, kind of talk to them and say, could you?
Well, lately we have had to start talking to people to get the money. So.
Yeah, it was doing.
And Gannon is the highest-
Yeah.
In the city.
Do we have a Caco Bridge in here?
Caco Bridge is, no, we haven't received that money yet.
I don't remember.
No.
That's a question, that's a good question. I know we got it, or they plan to get it anyway.
Yeah, and this, these, these donations are just the ones that go for capital. I mean, there are, there is another donation account, contribution account in the revenue. It is 3641. It's empty right now. We haven't gotten a penny this year.
That sounded about familiar from last year too.
Right, well, we ended up getting 189,000 in November and December. So we put 150 in there because we've always gotten something in that account. It just seems to come in late in the year. Okay, so let's, on to page 17. There's the, the parking fines. I took those and basically looked at our current ticket collections and projected out the next three months. And the state police fines, parking, traffic court costs and all that, just based on prior years and where we're at right now.
So we think we'll get 600,000 between now and more fines?
On, on the fines?
Yeah.
Well, we're at, we got 15, 15 or 1.5 million last year, so I'm hopeful.
Odd even parking, odd even parking drives it.
Yeah, I mean, they do pick up in the winter. Yeah. So in the next section, investment income, I dropped that. I'm looking at, Chuck, you can tell me if this is good or bad, but dropped it by a half a percent per quarter for next year.
Per quarter? So 200 basis points for next year? No.
No?
No.
No?
No. The market right now has that at 100 basis points on the whole year next year. And then the other thing is, if you looked at with the last election, the 30-year mortgage actually started going up because they're expecting the interest rates won't be able to go down as fast.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't-
After I calculated, I heard different things on the news. I calculated before the election too.
Yeah.
So we might be able to squeeze a little more out of that. The other thing that causes this to be down from last, last year is we've spent 2.7 million on State Street Improvement Project and haven't gotten a penny back from RACP yet. So we're losing interest on that. So.
Who's in control of getting it from?
Um, the state, state of Pennsylvania.
The name or, you know.
Yeah, we've talked to a lot of people about it. Every, every, every time we talk to them, there's one little thing missing. And then we get that and there's another thing missing. So hopefully we'll get that in before the end of the year.
Hopefully.
Uh, let's see, reimbursements. We've got, I'm going to go over the big reimbursements first. The ARP reimbursement is on, let's see, line, it, it, account number 3679 and there's a chart on page nine of your council book that'll tell you what we're getting reimbursed for. And this is a little different this year. Because we, we have the full complement of all the police officers that we originally planned on reimbursing from ARP and we calculated it that way. And then we reduced that by- Page nine. We reduced it by 1,041,666. That's what we're going to get from the COPS grant to pay for the same officers that the ARP grant was going to be paying for. So we're saving those ARP funds so that we can extend those units out further into the future, make that money last longer. We're, okay, so we, we have 2.9 million here calculated that we were going to use to pay for these salaries that are calculated here. The, the money that was going to be paying for the police officers was the 2.6 million in the blue. Okay, this second to last figure on the bottom, 1 million, 1,041. We're going, we're getting that amount from the COPS grant instead. So that's going to save the amount that we're taking out of the ARP grant. And that's going to happen for the next three years.
That amount for every, every year?
Yeah, yeah, the exact same amount. It's not gonna increase or anything.
Is that in the grants page?
Uh, well, it's in that. No, it's not.
Okay. Why?
Complete oversight. It needs to go back in there.
I'm sorry, what?
Um, let me take a look at that and I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow, but I think it needs to go back in.
Yeah, because without it being on.
It needs to go in on a new line item.
Right, because without it being on the grants, then that's a million dollars coming from taxes for.
Yeah, it needs to, it does need to go on in, into the grant revenue.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so that's pretty much everything for the revenue. Now, we were also gonna go over the mayor's office, um.
Let me, can't mind if I say one little thing about revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Colleagues, if you notice on page nineteen of the handout that we have, it has the revenues of all the other comparable cities. They always get this detail wrong, though. They have the little asterisks on here for which ones are Act forty-seven or Home Rule Charter. If you look across the resident EIT rate across the bottom of that pa- on the top, but the bottom, if you look right across this line here, you can see the income tax on page nineteen of this handout, the other handout.
This?
Yes. Page nineteen has all of our comparable cities. They put asterisks for which ones are Act forty-seven or Act forty-seven and Home Rule Charter, but they never update those because a bunch of them have changed. If you look at the resident EIT rate, which is on the bottom, the top box, but the bottom line, that is limited by Act five eleven. We are capped at one percent. So if you notice, all of those cities have more than one percent except for Bethlehem. That's because they are either Home Rule Charter, Act forty-seven that they are distressed, or like us, Act two oh five with a distressed pension. There is not a city in the state comparable to us except for Bethlehem that is not currently either Home Rule Charter or distressed. And that's what I'd like to fix. But want to point it out when we look at these comps, don't pay attention to the asterisks, those are all wrong.
So, but why don't you think that we're doing pretty good then?
That means we're doing great that we only have a distressed pension. And that all these other cities have been distressed at various times, uh, to go through Act forty-seven or are currently in, or they've moved on to Home Rule Charter after being Act forty-seven. But that line, you can check it, it's Act, um, five eleven in the Pennsylvania code, which limits all of our tax revenues. And they limit income tax at one percent unless you have Act forty-seven, Act two oh five, or our Home Rule Charter. That's all I had to say about that revenue.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so on to the mayor's office. That's page twenty.
Is it in the book or the handout?
In the budget book.
Can I have that page again, Lisa?
Uh, twenty. So the mayor's budget is pretty much the same as last year, except for their wages have dropped because, um, the cat moved into, um, the Office of Development Services, and she took the grant writer, or the grant manager position, and they didn't replace her. So the wages are down. And that's pretty much the only difference. Renee, did you have anything or mayor that you wanted to say about? Okay. All right, so the next page, twenty-one, is the Office of Communications. And their expenses are pretty much the same, except that, um, the wages are higher because they had a lot of turnover. They had a couple of people that were newly hired in March and April. And there were some increases that were given to them in the middle of the year. And some of that money came out of the mayor's budget for not replacing CAD. So that was all in memos that you got earlier in the year.
So what was the increase in the middle of the year based on?
Renee?
Just because the over the negative position.
Little voice.
They had a limited position.
And the other staff took on those responsibilities.
Um, I recall us having a chat at the Booker T about me mentioning how originally the position CAT was in wasn't a position we had originally had. They created that position. Turned out that they didn't need that position. She took the grant writing position. Her salary then got debited up among the communication, uh, no, the New American liaison.
They're all in the communications.
Communication and, uh, the New American liaison, they all got increases, um, even though they were new to the job. They weren't even six months in, which I had an issue with, and I brought it up.
Eighty grand more this year.
Yeah, you remember?
What about the need for positions in engineering and that that haven't been filled yet?
Um, well, I guess we'll go over those when we get to the, um, engineering part of the budget.
Um, Lisa, I appreciate that the two thousand twenty-four final salaries are in there. Um, you know, we did that last year, uh, because of my request or, um, strongly worded, um, recommendations of it. Um, maybe in the final copy of this, after we approve it, if we could, instead of doing the twenty twenty-four final salary, we could get the twenty twenty-four budgeted salary so that we could see how much it was increased from time to time, from times that we voted on it to the next time that we voted on it. Um, the final salary thing was a lot more prudent last year because it was all of those raises that we see in the middle of the year, and not all those. I mean, they're just occasional. Um, but this time, I, I think I'd rather see what I voted on last time versus what I'm voting on this time for the change. Um, you know, we get these, for anyone watching this, if people are bored enough to do that at home, um, you know, we get, we get personnel emails, I don't know, every month as to what was changed in salaries. So we get updates on these as they go, but I'll be honest, I don't keep track of them too strongly as the months go.
So each position went up ten, like, from forty-five thousand to fifty-four, so that's a ten thousand a year?
Yeah.
A big chunk of change.
Yes, I guess, I'm in a yes and no spot. Um, yes, in, in the middle of, since we voted, but still, that's, it seems like a lot of money, but it's not. It's really not.
It's not, it's not an impressive wage. It's a notable raise.
Yeah, especially when new hires came into the job knowing what the salary was. They took the job and then shortly after they got an increase.
Yeah.
That's where my issue always was on the situation.
And Magic Wand, to be fully transparent, I'd probably give them all more.
I would give a lot of the workers more if we could.
We, we can, that's, we have that ability. It takes five votes.
Mm-hmm.
If you're a worker watching this, email Jasmine.
All right, so on to, the Director of Finance and Administration. That's basically me. And we took all of the, um, all of the expenses, office supplies and all that, and just moved them to, um, to the Department of Accounting and Finance, because that's, that's who orders all my office supplies. So I never spend this budget, so we just moved it.
Where, where did you?
Uh, page thirty-one.
So, I, sorry, I'm like following along, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Okay. Okay, well, that one hasn't changed at all, so.
This, I had last year's too, just so I could like kind of keep, try to keep myself on track. So they, but there are new positions, right? So.
No, this is page thirty-one. It's only me. It's only one person.
Thirty-one in the book.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't switch to the mayor's. So from the mayor's office that we have.
You want to go back to the mayor's?
The accounting position, wait, because that was the spot that, uh, to the, the grant writer, the data administrator.
Yeah, well, this is confusing. The grant writer was in the Department of Neighborhood Resources.
Okay, so that one was.
That one got moved into the Department of Development Services.
Okay.
That's a new department that was created with Chris Groener, the, at the lead. And, um, he has a grant administrator and a grant, the grant writer under him. So that's CAT.
What's Groener's department called?
Office of Development Services.
Okay, that includes all the money and loans and stuff?
Yeah. Now, his, his salaries are reimbursed out of the, um, the loan funds.
Both of the loan funds.
And also with you being able to collect administrative fees, you plan on hopefully paying for the other two grant writers as well, correct?
Well, um, depending on.
Because I was stated that we were under, underpaying ourselves all these years on the administrative, um.
Yeah.
Money that they could have collected. So now that we're collecting that, the goal is to eventually be able to pay for the grant.
Well, right now, it's coming out of, it's still coming out of ARP. I think it's on, if you go back to that, um, ARP, I think it's page ten in the,
The big book?
In the, the council book? Oh, maybe it's page eight. Yeah, page nine includes the grant administrator, um, the grant accountant.
In the book or in the?
In, in the council book, page ten. It, it goes back to the grant reimbursement revenue?
It's like where is the wall going?
No, you're in the budget book. That other package, yeah. It's, it's on the screen if you want to, it, it's up on the screen.
That's so sad, I can't believe.
There you go. Those are all the people that are being reimbursed and, uh, the percentages of their salary that are being, a little bit of mine, but not much anymore. Um.
All that's gonna go away next year, when the ARP money's gone?
The ARP money's not going to be gone. It's, um.
After next year, after two, twenty twenty-five? We'll still have ARP money?
Yeah, we should.
All right, so the grant writers that used to exist in.
In Neighborhood Resources.
Are now under, over on?
Oh, they're over in, uh, the Development Finance, uh, Department.
Which is not to be confused with the grant writers who are gonna be in, to apply?
There are no grant writers. They're the same grant writers. They got moved to a new department.
So under the Office of Property Management, okay, everything?
Property Management and Neighborhood Resources have been split into two different departments. So all of the Neighborhood Resource people, the people that are doing the, the, um, Love Your Block and the Historical Preservation Grant and, and I, I have them in for another budget session so they can explain what they're doing.
So I, while I'm looking, because I'm, maybe I'm just confusing myself, this could be user error. Because under two oh five, there's a grant writer, and then under two oh three, there's a grant writer.
The grant writer has a zero next into the, in their twenty-one, five salary. So that's to show you, that's to help you figure out where, what things are different.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that person got moved into Neighborhood Development Services. Make a flow chart, yeah, okay. All right, so where was I? Okay, uh, Communications, right? Oh, we're, we're back in my budget, okay.
And you were explaining how you got, you moved your office supply budget over to the department that actually orders your office supplies.
Okay. All right, so page thirty-four. We're just doing all of my departments right now. All right, so this is the.
Fans are complaining they can't hear you.
This is the Office of Account, Finance and Budget. That's, um, you know, all, all of my staff, well, not all of my staff, but some of my staff.
And your office is finally fully staffed, right?
Yes, yes. It's been for, what, two months? One month, maybe? And, uh, we, we've budgeted it as fully staffed. So, um, you're gonna see the wages increase because I've been short-staffed for pretty much all of last year in, uh, either one or two people. So everything else is, uh, pretty much what last year's budget was, what we expect this year to be.
When you give, uh, wage increase, do you use percentages? Do a person get five percent based on performance? Do they get ten percent based on performance?
No, there's no performance-based raise. The, um, unions are negotiated and the management usually, um, management non-bargaining usually follows the unions, the AFSMI.
That's standard?
Yeah.
How is, how are the salaries determined? Like an account analyst, does that, just, how do you come up with that salary? Or is that?
Um.
Like if I was hired today as an account analyst, you'd say, this is what you're, how do you, how is that?
We usually have a range and, um, we, we base it on, um, maybe what the last person was, um, getting, but, but not quite up to that level because the last person would have included longevity and, um, experience. So, yeah, there's usually a range and depending on your level of experience here at the lower, or that, that one end of the range or another. So, um, on the non-bargaining positions, the AFSMI positions are, um, per the contract. And another thing happened in the middle of last year, the, the way they were calculating the progression on new employees for AFSMI went up in the middle of last year. So there's another reason for some, uh, some of the wage differences. So all of those combined to make, um, make my wage budget seem a lot higher, but nobody got any, um, major raises or anything like that. Everything was contractual and, um, I just had a lot of empty positions this year and last year. Also, the payroll office. Now, we had an empty position for a good bit of last year in the payroll, too. So, um, we're below budget right now, but we're fully staffed there, too. And, uh, their expenses are pretty much the same as last year's budget, um, all the below-the-line expenses. That was, uh, page thirty-five. Now, I'll try to do IT justice since, uh, I am, it's here. Now, I'll try to do IT justice since, uh, I am, it's here. The IT people, um, were proposing raises for all of them because when, there, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, they've been here for, the newest one's been here for five years and the other three have, have been here for twenty years or longer. And their raises were, or their salaries were lower than a good many of the new people, so.
They also, and I've complained about this last two budgets, they don't get the increment that bumps everybody up every like four years of continuity. So it's like kinda, they've gotten the AFSMI raises, but not the increments that go with longevity.
Right.
So I'm really excited to see them getting taken care of.
Well, that's, that's how all of the, uh, non-bargaining and management people got so far behind AFSMI, they don't, they don't get longevity bumps. So, um, quite a few departments are upside down where their management staff is getting paid less than their union staff.
Well, I know that they do a lot for our city and, you know, everyone depends on IT, so they deserve to be taken care of, so.
They were here at three in the morning when the, uh, crowd strike went down.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's, that's, uh, that's the one major difference in IT. And you'll notice that account number forty fifty-six went up considerably. It's Repair and Maintenance Services. And that includes all of our, um, subscriptions to software. And what we're trying to do here is we, we tried to consolidate all the subscriptions in this department, they're, they're being charged to a whole bunch of different other departments. So we took several subscriptions from, um, Neighborhood Resources that were paid for out of a grant. Uh, the grant ended and those ended up in here, that, that was totaling about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But we also took some of the other, just smaller, um, subscriptions and moved them into this account. So that, uh, A, that we know what we're paying all across the board for subscriptions.
Did you do that for, um, the clerk's office as well? Cause we have, we pay for like the E-code, I think it was, out of our office.
Probably not.
Okay.
I don't remember E-code, no, uh, let me, is it in there? It's in council's budget.
Alright, just seeing how far it's stretched.
So we can move it, yeah. Cause it, it makes sense for IT to keep track of all that.
Whatever makes sense for you on that, that's all, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out how far it is. Cause I know E-code went up a ton last year.
Yeah.
And that, I think we had to budget an extra five thousand dollars for it or something, it like doubled.
Yeah.
So, um, just curious, which, which went where, okay.
Yeah. And, uh, that, those are the only big differences in the IT's budget. Let's see, the next page is purchasing. And that budget's staying about the same. The salary's going up, but the, um, pension con, or the, uh, health insurance, we changed ba, the way we allocated health insurance back to the way we did it in the past. We, we tried last year to allocate it based on exactly what kind of insurance everybody had and it didn't make, make it any better because people move around so much, so, um, you'll see it the most in, in the council budget. We give everybody twenty-seven thousand dollars per person for health insurance and, and insurance costs. And those of you that don't have any insurance, you're gonna, you're gonna be way under budget on your insurance. And no matter what, what?
Can we have the money?
No.
No, it gives you purpose.
Sorry. And tha, that's just an average of what we're paying for family, single, you know, parent, child and all that. But yeah, we, we tried to be more specific and it really didn't work, it, it was still, um, confusing, so. Chuck, you, you thought we should put it back that way, so.
Sweet.
I took your advice. Okay, so after the purchasing, is the print shop? Wages will be going down because, um, we have two people in there right now and Randy will be leaving it after, um, April?
What page?
Oh, uh.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
When is he leaving?
Uh, April.
To enjoy his retirement.
Yeah.
That's right.
And, uh.
How big of a burden is that? Could we outsource it cheaper, or do we need to have that?
I.
All the printers and everything we have today, I just question.
I don't know, I guess we'd have to, that would be an analysis worth doing. But the cost of everything's going up, paper, supplies, all of that, um, so. That's the only differences in the, uh, print shop. Then we have General Government. And, um, for the General Government page, I'm gonna.
What number?
You jump to, what page?
Oh, it's page eighty-five? Sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
Yeah, that's a big, big jump.
Well, there's a whole bunch of Public Works accounts in between and all the other, uh, departments. Yeah, all the, the rest of the ones you're gonna hear for the rest of the week.
Sixty-five or eighty-five?
Yeah.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. And there's a pretty good, um, there's a pretty good, uh, page in the, um, the council book that will detail out all of the expenses.
In the council handout.
Yeah, and that is on page twenty-two of the council handouts. Some of these accounts are pretty big, we got one point three million in the, uh, Professional Services and seven, uh, seven hundred and sixty-two in the Risk and three hundred and ninety-six. Oh, uh, page twenty-two.
Thank you.
So we broke them out by different, so that we could give you more detail on all the accounts. So payouts, um, it's, it's usually a guess. I mean, we look at what we've done in prior years, we try to figure out who's retiring next year, but it's always less than what turns out to happen, so. Um, we did calculate out all the retirements and then, um, added some, the, some for the surprise element. Um, the Professional Services, you've got audit fees, Berkheimer charges, uh, charges, Employer Employee Service, Legal Services, um, Ed Betz is in there. Oh, no, uh, Miscellaneous Banking Fees, Central Square, uh, that is a maintenance contract on our finance software. And that's one that was kinda, we didn't move that to IT, we thought, we thought we would do that, but, um, maybe next year we'll do that, because it was such a large amount. Actuarial Services, uh, Security and, uh, we're, we still put in a Housing Study and an Industrial Appraisal Fixed Asset Inventory.
What is Housing Study?
You wanna explain that, Renee?
I can hear it.
The Housing Study, what is that?
You wanna talk about the Housing Study?
We were gonna do a housing study this year, but we didn't get to it yet. It's to do a comprehensive analysis of the neighborhoods and how, which areas we need to add for a whole workforce on the right permanent support of housing. And we're actually collaborating with the county on a grant application to the state to see if we can get that partially funded and then this funding will serve as match.
How often are we required to do a housing study? Is that like, uh, every so many years or?
No, a lot of communities don't do it, but we probably need to.
It's not a requirement here, but like Connecticut requires it every ten years.
Okay.
It's a, it's a common issue. Now, last year we cut that back from a hundred to fifty, and I see it's back in at a hundred this year. Any comments?
Well, we thought we might cut it back to fifty.
Just did.
They were preemptive.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, if we get the grant, that would be great, but with COVID, consultants or spending like that, it's probably gonna be two hundred thousand dollars.
And we're doing that in conjunction with the county?
Was fifty, was fifty the holdup as why it didn't get done this year?
Yes.
I'm gonna get you delaying things, Chuck, just saying.
So if you count fifty for this year, fifty for next year, that's a hundred.
Consulting's where it's at.
Big money.
Okay, uh, we've got an Education Training Budget, um.
What about emergency care? Why are we paying that? Doesn't most people's insurance pay for emergency care when they come in?
Len, you here?
I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, doesn't, and because other townships.
Who wants to tackle that one, Len or Ren?
So we're paying.
Yeah, because they don't have a service.
Emergency care.
And because emergency care's out here, they still have to go.
Why do we put a hundred thousand in the, uh, budget for emergency care?
Is that new this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the first time.
Sweet.
Why?
We're, we're required as a municipality to fund emergency services.
We do, we're first responders, aren't we?
I mean, ambulance services.
Ambulance services, okay.
And they have a massive budget deficit, so we're trying to help until the county passes the, um, EMS authority fee.
We'll still be having a hefty fee, sorry.
What's that?
We would still have a, a chunk that we would give even when that comes through too.
The EMS crisis continually gets worse, it's not getting better.
Yeah, and it's just gonna get worse, the farther away from the city you are.
Don't worry about your own.
There's no other way around it.
Which hopefully, when it's done in twenty twenty-five, it starts in twenty twenty-six.
I had asked to add that last year, uh, and had been kicking it around, that was, so I'm, I'm pretty relieved to see it in this year. We'd had a lot of study sessions with, um, you know, emergency care, uh, last year when, uh, Councilman Faulkner was the liaison there. Uh, she and I had had a bunch of meetings about, about how big of a deficit it is right now. Um, I think that EMS authority, um, the new formula they have for is a little bit better than what we originally saw, but, um, I think that, I think that's gonna end up being a solution, but it's gonna be a new fee, you know, as much as you love those. At least the county takes a bite for it this one.
I just, just merely a question.
With the, uh, EMTA, is that the same amount as we did last year?
Let me look, that's in the revenue?
Um, it's on your twenty twenty-five general government overview. It is forty-one twenty.
So that forty-one twenty, well, it's the same amount we budgeted last year. Um, we did five hundred and fifty-nine last year, we're at six hundred right now, so. We looked at it, uh, when we looked at it, we, we were below six hundred thousand, we were estimating the last quarter, so, um, that's, we're just basing it on what we did this year. I mean, it's a different amount each quarter, they bill us.
Please, you want to explain that it's based on a percentage?
Pardon?
You want to explain that it's based on a percentage, it's not like we can budget the amount.
Right.
The city and the county.
Yeah, we're, we're paying a percentage in the county, uh, I, I don't remember what the percentages are, are they?
I thought you said sixty.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. Yeah, we have the, we have the bulk of it, I thought it was like sixty, forty or something, but I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
Did you have any opportunities to do anything with my resolution from the last meeting? About the folks that may be exempt from the fee increases? Or didn't they even tell you about it?
I saw it, I mean, I read it, but I haven't had time to do anything with it, we've been kind of busy with the budget.
I understand that, but it's gonna be part of the budget for these folks.
Right, yeah, we hit, we just, we're trying to get to this meeting with, with stuff to show you and, um, we'll take a look at it between now and the next meeting.
Alright, before we vote on the budget.
Yeah. And how are you planning on determining those people?
It was if they qualified.
Retired people in the city with homeownership.
Okay.
Residential.
There was, there was a caveat in the, in the resolution, it's like they were under a certain income, I can't remember the exact.
You have to meet the blanket on it.
Yeah.
It's in the thing, yeah.
But it's important to know how, once you gather that information, what effect has it had?
On the budget.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's a, that's a big information pull because we'd have to coordinate. We'd have to cross-reference their salaries with their, um, property taxes. Or, and I don't know that you can find out with somebody on social security.
I don't think you should deal with the salaries, I'm talking about retired people in their single-family homes. Say Mo's mom, she owns her home and she's retired or near retirement. She shouldn't have to be paying more because she's been paying her whole life already. That, that's my point, I mean, I'm not saying I want the break, I'll pay whatever I have to pay.
We'll pull them together.
But there's a lot of folks on Sixteenth Street, uh, over by the old Columbus School that are sitting on properties that grandma owned and they've taken over and they're getting killed.
Well, we'll try to pull some statistics for you.
I know, it's a big, it's a big grab, but we always hit those people.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud that, uh, we'd have to look at the percentage of the population and that's under a certain income level that is of a certain age to even start pulling that, and then we'd have to find out whether they were homeowners or not, so.
Right.
The verbiage that was used was that, uh, for residents who qualify and participate in the PA State Property Tax Rent Remake Program.
Yeah, that already identified people. Just looking for a way to try to help these folks.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Does the county have that information?
I don't know, that's why I was asking. I just, uh, what I get from the folks out there is that they, they'd be happier with the tax increase because that's the one time of year, uh, with these things, with these fees, they get it quarterly or whatever.
The issue with that though is that there'll be thirty percent of not tax-exempt properties that won't be paying anything.
Raise the fee for the people who quit on it.
That's the thing, is that the only way.
The fee increase is directed at nonprofits.
The fee is for everyone, that's why they've gotten away with getting the nonprofits to pay it.
The nonprofits can pay it, so let them pay it.
So what, you wanna charge the nonprofits the fee but not the homeowners? Is that what you're trying to say?
I'm saying that we can make up the money by charging everybody who makes money to pay the money and not hurt the folks that built the city in the first place and now are hurting because their pensions fell apart from Hammer Mill or whatever it might be. There's a whole lot of folks out there that are hurting. And just looking at it, I'm not, I don't want any giveaways, feel like anything else. The people who use the roads should pay for the roads, uh, and we do, right, as simple as that.
Um, Lisa, last year, like half the money that we cut from the budget, we put back in, in the, uh, in account, forty ninety-eight, the contingency, cause there were some contracts that were, uh, still being worked on.
Contract.
I think it was fire.
Yeah, fire, yeah.
Um, so it didn't get used, we, we stayed, we stayed good there, it's back to a hundred. Um, does it even need to be a hundred, given that, given that we don't have the same contingency? In previous years it had been fifty-two, thirty-five?
Well, it's not just for contracts, it's just things that you didn't remember to budget, so we always put something in there. Or things that you didn't anticipate to happen. I mean, we can empty it, but.
I'm sorry, what?
Reclassification for some of the units.
Okay, okay, okay.
Anybody have any other questions about any of that?
On, um, the real estate taxes, uh, it's forty-one.
What page?
It's forty, it's, uh, sixty-five. There was just a big jump in like what we collected. It's line, it's on page fifty-five, line forty-one ninety.
Oh, we threw, um, we put the stormwater fees through that account. So, that's real estate taxes and stormwater fees. And we ended up paying twenty-three and twenty-four in twenty-four because, um, we didn't get all the, we didn't get our bills in twenty-three.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Lisa on the first budget session of the year?
Well done, of course.
Just, just wanna point out, I mean, so we have... Oh, you know what? Uh, with the American Rescue Plan dollars, we've gone through revenue replacement, and I brought this up last year as well. I'd like to see that separated from reimbursements, uh, because, and this happens, I, I know I've brought it up for three years in a row now, that we always have the projections for reimbursements increasing in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. And we won't have American Rescue Plan dollars by then. So, this has happened every year, I, I know I always complain about it. But I'd like to see those separated, especially now that we've gone through, uh, revenue replacement. And so that they're not part of reimbursement, so that we can get a cleaner picture of what it looks like when that runs out.
Yeah.
Because I think that changes our five-year projection substantially. Next, this year, we're basically operating with a six million dollar deficit funded by American Rescue Plan dollars for two million and four million for the, uh, water prepayment. Next year, the water prepayment generally runs out and we still have two or three million dollars from American Rescue Plan funding coming in. And then we're looking at a two mil tax increase next year. Because that deficit that we've been pawning off, pushing off, hits us next year because of the water prepayment running out. I also wanted to be like, displayable when the American Rescue Plan dollars fail, um, cause I'm not sure that that really shows up in our, is, is that reflecting our staff and wages? The thirty positions that get cut? Previous five-year projections, we've put thirty jobs getting cut down the road.
Right, we, we had, uh, attrition budgeted, but I took that out because, and we're using other funds to supplement that and, uh, we didn't need to do the attrition this year, so.
I think that's what I've always feared. Um, so if we can get the reimbursements separated, so that American Rescue Plan dollars are separate, cause right now, our five-year projection is, um, is deceptively optimistic because it includes American Rescue Plan dollars forever and it also includes those staff positions forever. So, I'd like it to be one or the other. I'd either like to see something in the budget that demonstrates thirty staff positions getting cut, which I've always been pessimistic would happen, or would demonstrate when American Rescue Plan dollars end so that we can understand how big of a deficit we're truly looking at in this five-year budget. As it stands now, we're looking at a two mil increase next year, another mil the year after, and then some stability. But I think it's looking, I think it's a bigger deficit than what's being presented to us.
You're looking at the, uh, five-year.
Projections, yes.
You want it on that five-year?
Yes, please.
Anyone else?
Does anyone else on council have questions for Lisa? Tyler, don't worry, you can email her, she is at your disposal. This is not her first session with a new council member, so don't feel overwhelmed.
Oh, I'm gonna still feel overwhelmed, that's.
That's okay, you came prepared and she told you your book was invalid, so, you know, it happens. All right, everyone, thank you so much for giving us your time tonight to have our first study session. Our next one will be on Tuesday.
I'd like to elaborate on the emergency care thing a little bit.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I met with Dave Bazmat a few weeks ago, um, and talked about the EMS crisis and, and what the situation was. He broke down the city of Erie, called all their calls in the city of Erie, which has the largest percentage of Medicare, Medicaid and no pay runs. They figured their deficit just in the city of Erie is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I told their, good luck with that. But, you know, talking with Mayor Renee, uh, he also, uh, said he would come at any time and you guys wanted to sit down with him and talk and discuss what exactly was going on and, you know, what they wanted to do. So, that's, you can let me know, let, you know, the Mayor Renee know and I'll get in contact with him with Diggs or whatever, if you wanna talk to him.
If anyone wants to talk to him, I'm pretty sure you can reach out to the chief and he will.
Chief, I didn't have a problem with that, I just didn't see that.
Well, no, what I wanted everybody to know that, you know.
That's what the study session was when we were up at the trip, Mo- Trans, uh, Mobile Center.
That was for the county EMS authority. I met with a couple of weeks ago, uh, because he called me and, we meet regularly, you know, he just wants a quarter to discuss issues between the fire department and, and emergency care. So, I brought that up because it is budget time, so, um, he would be more willing to come and, and present all of his findings and information to you. Or, or, you know, talk to anybody individually if you all wanna do this work.
Anyway, it's good stuff, I don't know, I've just, you know, I've not been up so many times about this.
This has been, they've been like kinda screaming from the rooftop for a while now, this is bad. It's just gonna project to get worse.
Well, at least we know that we're doing our part. I mean, we might not financially be.
We're doing a fraction of our part.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, but considering where we are, it's something versus nothing, so. Um, I wanna thank everybody for, um, your participation in the first study session of the season. Um, the next one is night, on the nineteenth, and it is going to be, um, going over the study session for the sewers and the fee increases that we wanna do for the next five years. Well, not that we want to do, but that we need to do. Um, and then the wastewater, so that's on the nineteenth, that'll be starting at five-thirty here in Chambers. So, everybody have a good evening, thank you so much.